Good afternoon, colleagues. The Committee of the Whole is called to order for Bill 420-35 LS. I'll introduce by virtual participants. We have Mr. Lester Carlson, Director of BBMR; Mr. Edward Byrne, Director of DOA; we have Paula Blas, Director of Retirement Fund; and we have Luelen Turlai sitting in right now for Steve Guero, the Director of OFB. I'd ask now that the Sarn Arms will swear in the panel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I have all four of you raise your right hand, please? Under penalties or perjury, do you all affirm that what you say in today's hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Affirm.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So under oath.
Thank you, Sarn Arms. I would ask now the author of the Bill 420-35 LS to introduce her bill again. We are now at introduction of the bill. Senator Torres. But before we go on, let me just read the rules of engagement so that we don't start taking off in all directions. Members are allowed five minutes for questions. We'll have two rounds of questions. Are allowed five minutes, not including the response. We're only referring to the question. So the longer you talk about your questions, the faster or the less time you have available for you. And after the questions, I ask that the amendments, if there's going to be any amendments, it'll be emailed to the clerk, legal counsel, and the committee before the motion to amend is made on the floor. Amendments will be ruled out of order if it's not submitted prior to it being proffered. And then after the questions, we'll dismiss the panel. Then we entertain the four amendments. All right. I would ask now the sponsor to please introduce her bill, and we'll proceed on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not restate what I had read prior to the Committee of the Whole, but I will begin by introducing my bill by stating the title. Bill number 420-34 LS, introduced by myself and Senator and Speaker Tina Munya-Barnes, is an act to amend Section 5A in Chapter 11 of Public Law 3511 and to appropriate the sum of $470,000 to the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services relative to funding the operations of the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services in fiscal year 2021, which may include, but not be limited to, the Bureau of Emerging Infectious Diseases. Essentially, what this bill does, as we're aware, is it amends Section 5 of Chapter 11, 5A of Chapter 11, Public Law 3511, which is the Budget Act, to take into account that, to amend it from an appropriation for COLA payments of $428... I'm sorry, of $14,898,000 to $14,428,000, and to reappropriate the difference, which is $470,000, to the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Essentially, that's what this bill is doing in light of the fact that public health was shorted what they needed for fiscal year 2021. So we're identifying where there is a surplus in the appropriation for COLA payments and applying that difference to public health instead. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Torres. We will now begin questions. Reminder, two rounds of questions. You skip, that's one round. Senator Moynihan, we'll begin with you. Sir, do you have any questions to the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For anybody on the panel, so I understand we had an overage on the estimated amount of retirees. If you can kind of repeat the total number and what that equals in dollars? And was this also a similar situation back in the previous fiscal year? And how far did that go back? To anyone in the panel, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If any one on the panel would like to answer that question, Lester or Paula?
Mr. Byrne can talk about any prior fiscal year matters.
Oh, Mr. Chairman. I looked at the recently issued 2019 audit, and you refer to page 161. It shows that the budget and the actual showed no variance. Beyond, I wasn't able to go any further back, so I don't have any ready knowledge on years before 2019.
Okay. Thank you, Director. So basically, it's unknown if this happened in prior fiscal year. Is that what I'm understanding? Or further research to determine and letting us know later? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We would have to do further research beyond 2019.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then also, again, just to reiterate, the total number of overage on our retirees and the total dollar amount and how that was calculated, please.
Paula?
Ms. Blas, could you answer that? How did they come up with that amount?
Yes, I'm sorry. Senator Moynihan, at the beginning of the calendar year when the budget call is actually requested for, the retirement fund has to make certain assumptions with regards to how many people are going to retire within the fiscal year, because that's kind of a moving target throughout the year until September comes out. In, for fiscal year 2020, there were about 1,183 people that were likely eligible to meet the retirement age or service. So we made an assumption of so many people that would retire, not taking into account that there's going to be deaths throughout the year, because even with that, we wouldn't know until they actually reported to us. So we overassumed for this fiscal year the number of people that would actually retire.
Overassumption is 270? Is that correct? At $2,000 per person?
Yes, only... That's correct.
Would you have knowledge of the prior year for the other question I had asked earlier?
I don't have that info with me right now, but I can actually check on that. But Mr. Byrne could actually respond to that if there was a difference.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Will, do you have any... No question. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Comment too, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity. I co-sponsored this bill, Mr. Chair, with Senator Mary Torres in an effort to provide the resources to public health. As you know, that based on the budget shortfalls from public health because of the constraints that we were in, we knew that any resources that we could find and get would at least help in the efforts of moving public health's mandates forward. I did send a letter to Director Paula on the last week of October asking her, and I did note that Bill 420-35 attempts to appropriate $470,000 from the General Fund for the Department of Public Health with the option to utilize it toward the Department's Emerging Infectious Diseases Bureau. The amount was calculated as the excess appropriation related to the cost of living allowance appropriation, right? The cost of living allowance that has since been paid. The amount of $14,898 was appropriated from the General Fund toward the non-autonomous agencies' retiree COLA payments. But based on our previous conversations, the amount of $14,428,000 was actually spent to cover the mandatory COLA payments for the non-autonomous agencies for the retirees. So my question to Paula, if she may, based on the information that she gave me, did the autonomous agencies submit payments for their COLA retirees by the different autonomous agencies? Did they submit funding for them?
I can tell you that we actually provided the information to DOA, and DOA bills the autonomous agencies, so...
Speaker, if I could answer that.
Sure.
Don't cut off the director. But the way we handled it was that DOA paid over the gross amount to the retirement fund and collected the contributions from the autonomous agencies.
Right. So in actuality, based on paying the cost of living allowances for all the retirees for the government of Guam, inclusive of the monies that were given from the autonomous agencies like GWA, Port Authority, GIA, Guam Housing, GPA, GVBA, and GITA, that total amount, including the General Fund and the retirement fund, mounted to $17 million. Is that correct? Does that sound about right?
Yes, Speaker, that's correct.
So based on those resources that were provided to the agency for expenditures, the full amount that was appropriated and everything paid out to date, there was, there is a balance of $470,000?
Yes. That is what's in our records.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Mr. Byrne. I do want to note, Mr. Chair, that this letter was sent to me in October, and I, in the same efforts of verifying, as the Oversight Chair of Retirement and making sure that even those retirees that may not have been paid or may have been in the retirement process and needed to get that COLA, that those things were step aside. Maybe I should just get a confirmation from Paula. Did every single retiree do a cost of living allowance appropriation or payment? Did every single retiree get paid?
With the exception of those that we are still processing as survivors for deaths that did happen prior to the 9/30, they're going to be paid to the beneficiaries, but they were already accounted for in our number.
And you still have the money set aside for that? Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much, Director Paula. I just want to say, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I do rise in support of this bill and with the affirmation, with the confirmation that the resources are there, I support the efforts of giving to the Department of Public Health and Social Services the funding they need for their programs moving forward. Signa Masi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Kelly, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Sutus Masi, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions at this time, but I like to reserve the time just in case.
Save it for the second round, right? Okay. Senator Theresa Lai, do you have any questions, ma'am, to the panel?
Yes, thank you. First, if I may, address the Director of the Retirement Fund. And just to confirm, so this amount that is being appropriated today is excess or leftover from the appropriation in FY '20? And I wanted to ask if there, since we've already paid the COLA out in October, I think, or early November, is there also an excess in FY '21?
I wouldn't know if there's going to be an excess yet, Senator Turlai, for FY '21? I mean, this is FY '21's COLA.
Oh.
The one we just paid out.
Right. But is that where this money is coming from? Or...
Yes. It's FY '21's. You always advance the COLA in November.
$35.99, but that was the FY '20 budget. Yeah, it was paid in advance for FY '21. Sorry. So you don't know... But didn't you just pay out again for FY maybe '22? Or did you just pay the FY '21 right now? I mean, just in the last month? Okay, then. Sorry, I'm wrong. All right, thank you. And so we won't know going forward. And my colleague asked about the past. Okay, so just wanted to confirm. Of course, I support the $470,000 we were able to find to go to public health. I've also received calls from recipients of the COLA that they want us, legislature, to take a look at that and make sure, you know, whether it's really moving with the standard of living that increase and if we can increase it. That's their plea. But I guess I just want to check then for, I guess, the DOA. If... Now, this appropriation is going to go to, it says operations of public health? Yes. Operations in FY '21. And it says it shall may... Sorry. Which may include, but not be limited to the Bureau of Emerging Infectious Diseases. And I just wanted to confirm because this came up at the public hearing. So the Bureau had told us in several public hearings that they were also receiving federal funds to start up their epidemiology and laboratory capacity or ELC funds. And they described to us how they would use additional money on top of the federal funds. And then I just heard on the radio, they described about moving the lab and that they would put it into the Hakobotan Building. Or that was what they were talking about at that time. But I just heard on the radio this morning, public health discussing not moving into the Hakobotan Building anymore and that that's been put on hold. And so I guess I just wanted to confirm, is the lab being... Oh, no. They had talked also about building... This was to build that outside building up at the Northern Facility. I take it back. I'm getting all these things confused. Sorry. I'm trying to keep it straight. All right, if I could just confirm. So in the interim, we've also received the reports of the CARES funding and how much of that went to public health. And... It's... The amount that was allocated to public health back when the first proposal for the CARES funding or, you know, budget was sent down here has really not changed. And so it doesn't even show on this recent report for August whether public health was going to... Sorry, the report for October, whether public health was going to receive that additional $3 million that they've continued to say they've asked for and been promised and were trying to hire with that additional $3 million? And they... And of course, I guess I want to ask whether any of the amount that is currently available in that CARES funding is going to be reallocated towards public health?
Senator Theresa, we're talking about Bill 420-470. Any other questions other than that bill? It won't be entertained.
I just want to know, because we're saying we're allocating it to operations, but I wanted to know if there are additional allocations from the CARES fund. I think it's relevant to know all the additional sources of money that we might not have known when we decided they need more money in operations. So I just want to know if there's anything else coming in. For example, they were counting on the three. It's not reported in their recent report. That affects what we discussed during the budget? And because there's money not spent yet in the CARES? If I've just...
I know.
It's a good time to know whether they're going to be receiving any.
Well, we'll ask...
Because that is the intent of the bills, to make sure that we make them.
But the bill is specifically the $470,000? I know where you're coming from, because I read the same thing today. But we're going to stick to Bill 420? About the $470,000? Any questions that the panel can answer reference the $470,000? Is what we're going to address, all right?
Right. But we're talking about it. We're appropriating this to public health. So I think it's very relevant to know the needs of public health, even after this or before this.
Senator Theresa, I know where you're coming from. We're at Bill 420.
Yes, I am too, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let's stick to it. Thank you. Do you have any other... Do you have a question to the panel?
Yes. This is an appropriations bill. We've called this panel down here for, to be able to talk to us about, you know, the fiscal status of the government of Guam. So I think it's very relevant to know if we're putting money towards public health, what additional monies that we did not count on going there might be going there. And I think it's a very simple question. Are they sending any more money from the CARES money that's still available, according to their October report, to public health?
Senator Theresa, if the panel wants to answer that?
Yes, I'd like to ask them. I don't see them.
Okay. But Senator Theresa, let me just remind you, we're on Bill 420.
Of course, I know that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let's stick to it.
I am on this bill.
Just this bill?
It's an appropriation bill to public health.
We're not appropriating to public health other than $470,000? That's all we're talking about?
Right.
We're not talking about the CARES, the report that you received in the mail today?
But the reason we're appropriating to public health is because of the underlying basis was our public, our FY '21 budget did not give enough to public health or did it. And they're not here, and I'm not asking all kinds of questions. I just asked one question, Mr. Chair, about are there other funds that we didn't know about that are going to go to public health?
Okay.
Because I think it's very relevant.
And that'll be your only question. Panel, do you have any response to that?
That's my question on this round, Mr. Chair.
Lester or Ed, do you have a response to that? Is there any more money available for public health?
From the $41 million that's still not expended from the CARES relief funds?
We're not going to talk about CARES. Do you have any additional funding?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the legislature. The simple answer to the question is no.
What was the answer? Lester, what was that? I didn't hear that.
No. The answer to her question is no.
All right. Thank you. Senator Sabina, do you have any... You have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question for the Director of Retirement. So just for my own information, is the COLA payments made only one time in the year?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And so if somebody retires during the fiscal year 2021, this transfer of funds or appropriation of funds would not impact that?
No, they would be eligible for the FY '22 COLA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Amanda, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions at this time. I thank the panel for being here today.
All right. Senator Peter Jose Turlai?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, but I don't have anything right now.
Thank you. Senator Louise Munya. Ma'am, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Telotid, do you have any questions on Bill 420, ma'am?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, those who are with us this afternoon. Thank you for taking the time out to come today to answer our questions. This question is to Paula. Paula, it was said that 270 individuals were overappropriated for the COLA payment for 2021. And you mentioned that these numbers that you provided for the legislature was done during the budget time submission, which is around January, February. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, you said that you provided those numbers. When you, when we were getting close to finalizing a budget, did you find that during that time, you noticed that you had overappropriated? Or could you not have known that until after the budget was passed? In other words, to update the numbers to the Committee on OFB?
In June, we tried to look at it again, but the list that we had of individuals expressing interest to retire was close to like 540 people. And given the current situation, many of them could not really finalize their decision until September. So even now, in looking at just my retirements for the month of October to November 15, a lot of what we anticipated would retire pre-9/29 ended up retiring after that date.
I see. Thank... Okay, thank you. And Paula, I'm not sure if I heard from Mr. Byrne about has there ever been a time where it was overappropriated, where the legislature appropriated too much money? Or... Because I wasn't sure. I didn't hear Mr. Byrne. But being that you've been at retirement for many, many years, have you ever come in that situation like we are today where there has been almost a half a million dollars in excess?
No. Not that I'm aware of.
This is the first time?
Yes. And the situation was kind of an anomaly for us as well, considering at the beginning of the calendar year, I don't know if it was fear or just personal choices on the part of employees, but we were getting bombarded with all kinds of requests for people wanting to retire. So we were just trying to prepare for making sure that when we submitted numbers that we would have enough to pay the COLA as opposed to under assuming, and then we didn't have enough to pay everyone.
Well, it's definitely unforeseen situation this year for 2020. And I've also heard many teachers who thought about retiring because of COVID and thinking it was a time that, you know, it's best to just retire at this time. So I could see the situation that you were in and trying to estimate it. Paula, has there any been... Are there any prior year obligations for any autonomous agencies that has not been paid COLA? That is... That you might anticipate or that's still on the books that have not been paid?
Everybody who would be entitled to COLA would have had to retire as of 9/29. Anyone who retires after that would not be eligible for the FY '21 COLA. And that includes autonomous agencies as well.
Okay.
So we've captured everybody up to the 9/29.
Okay, thank you, Paula. This is to BBMR. In your fiscal note that you had, you, on the tail end of your comments, you said the Bureau notes that there are technical corrections that need to be addressed in the proposed legislation's current form. I don't see any changes. Maybe the author is going to make some amendments. But Lester, can you tell me what those technical corrections that you're talking about?
Yeah. Real quickly, there's an amendment to Section 5A. We just want to be sure that the follow-on sections B, C, D, and E aren't erroneously deleted when Section A is revised because there are follow-on sections to Section 5. And we just want to make sure that it's specific to 5 and that there's no misunderstanding that the relevancy of Sections B, C, D, and E, you know, should be maintained.
Okay. Have you seen the bill? I mean, it hasn't changed or anything, so your technical corrections have not been made, but, okay, you know, I'll just.
Yeah, it's more of a clarification. We'll go ahead and I'll send Senator Sinagastin's staff. My, my staff's right up on that. Just to, it's more precautionary, but in, in, sometimes in drafting, when you revise a section, you, you might erroneously delete other relevant sections that we still want to make sure are contained there. So I will forward that for the committee's use and the, and the clerk's incorporation or just precautionary measures.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Lester, that's referring to where it says Section 5, add the letter A so that it doesn't impact the rest of the section. Am I correct, Lester?
I believe that that's how we want it done, sir. I, I am limited in my capabilities right now. So what I'll do is when I get a chance and this is over, I will go ahead and send that, because it's in a different format than this WhatsApp thing.
Okay, thank you. As, as we get to the author, I'll give her a chance to comment that. So Senator Clint, Senator Telo, do you have any further que, that's it? Senator Clint, do you have any questions? None? Senator Lee, do you have a question, ma'am?
This is Mosse, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, colleagues. Just a point of information, it's just in the title that needs to be changed, to note 5A in the title, but it's, it's indicated further in the bill.
All right, do you have any questions on, on the bill, on the panel?
I do not, Mr. Chair. Some of my questions were already asked and answered by previous colleagues, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank the panel members who have joined us and thank them for their willingness to answer our questions. This is Mosse.
All right. Senator Torres, do you have any question on the panel?
No, sir, I don't.
None? All right. Senator Moynihan, we're, we're in second round. Jim, you're good. Senator Will, do you have any questions? Speaker, nothing? Senator Kelly, nothing? Senator Theresa, do you have any other questions, ma'am?
Yes, just wanted to confirm with Mr. Byrne, or yeah, Mr. Byrne, I guess, if, if there have been any other transfers made to the Department of Public Health since the FY21 budget was passed. I think we authorized that in that budget, just want to make sure.
That's a budget question, Senator, so I'll refer it to Mr. Carlson.
Transfers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Carlson?
No, by law, we're required to report transfers to you.
Yes.
So we haven't done any.
All right.
Yeah, we have not.
All right, so with the language in this bill, it says it's going to be limited for this purpose, which is operations. Would that preclude use for Medicaid if they needed additional Medicaid matching?
I believe that that's an operational issue broadly taken, and I would have no problems if there was a need to transfer for bodily needed Medicaid, to allow for that to be considered as operational.
All right, all right. Do you know if there are any lapses that are anticipated from FY20 that are going to be put into the public health budget as well? Because we, we authorize carryover of their lapses.
I'm not aware yet, ma'am. We're still working with the agencies first and then, of course, DOA to be able to close fiscal year 20. So it's too early to, to know whether, whether there are and to what extent there might be carryovers.
When do you anticipate knowing that? At least for public health?
Ordinarily, ordinarily, we tried to, to close the books by December. And that, that, that effort is hopefully not going to be hampered by some of the COVID situations, but that's always our goal, ma'am, so that we can get the audit out in time.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Perez, do you have any questions, the second row?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps this question is for OFB and possibly BBMR. So I think it's always, I think, kind of, it's important to strategically use the federal funds in, in regards to areas, or at least I was thinking of appropriating these funds to more of the local needs where the federal funds don't cover. So I guess to, to your knowledge, this, this question's to OFB first, perhaps. What are some of the programs within the Department of Public Health that is strictly funded locally and that perhaps might be, should be prioritized?
Off the top of my head, Director's Office, facilities and maintenance.
Your own nursing?
Your own nursing.
Several, several programs there.
Yes, there, there are several programs, but that's just some to name a few. I'm not sure if Carlson wants to jump in and elaborate on the, the other programs, but that's just a few top of my head that's funded locally.
So in your experience in developing the, the budget, was there anything that stood out to you in regards to what was seriously underfunded and perhaps can be made whole with this additional appropriation?
When our analysis, when we developed the budget, we're, there was none. I think we, again, our approach was to look at the, the, there are certain basic needs of the department, and in our opinion, it was sufficiently funded.
Can you say that again? It was sufficiently funded?
Yes. In our analysis and our development of the budget, we feel that it was sufficiently budgeted for, to cover the basic operating.
So, yeah, I would appreciate more of the, if you can provide a listing of the, I guess the analysis hasn't been done yet in regards to which programs are solely funded locally. And I, I know the Environmental Health Safety Division seems to be predominantly locally funded, if not completely. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if BBMR can weigh in on that question as well, as well as DOA?
Senator Perez, the legislature was faced with a very difficult task of taking limited resources that were insufficient to fund what everybody would love to have funded. We still have educational needs, we still have public safety needs, and we still have public health needs. We are, if we, if we agree on that, then I think the, the statement from Llewellyn is okay, that the, the budget, given the restrictions on the resources, were, were done to the best of everybody's ability to, to allocate. I, I would take it a step further, going more directly to your question, and also in line with Senator Terahy, Theresa Terahy's question, that given the operational designation of the funds, that it can be used for areas that require local matches. And as the legislature is very well aware, many federal programs require a local match. So we have to be able to ensure, if there are any changes to local match requirements, that we have the resources to, to maximize getting these federal grants and maximizing their ability to serve our public health needs. So I, I think this is probably one of the easier fiscal notes that we've had to do in, in a while, simply because a budget normally takes into account and projects the needs for a particular program or, in the case of the budget as a whole, the entire operations of the government. This obligation and to, going back to Paula Bloss's comment, the COLA payments are sufficiently funded, and she does have resources to take care of the survivors who she is processing, but all the living COLA recipients have received their, their payment. So this obligation is, for all intents and purposes, it's, it has been met and the funding is available. So it was relatively straightforward to be able to write, whereas we agree that the, the obligations have been met and the 470,000 is available. If it is the desire of the policymakers of the government of Guam, the legislature, to direct this to public health, we, we, of course, will support that, given the fact that we, we are still in a public health emergency and there are a number of needs that we are continuing to have to meet. But more importantly, we don't know how much longer this is going to last. So any help is most welcome.
Mr. Byrne, I'm sorry, Mr. Carlson, I guess a follow-up question. I guess in your mind, since you're aware of how the CARES money is, is spent, what do you think would be the priority for the use of these general funds?
Again, the, the nature of the authorization before us in Bill 420, it's operations, not to be limited to this Bureau of Emerging Infectious Diseases. So I think that the authorization is sufficiently broad, and I think that if something popped up in the next 45 days that maybe wasn't anticipated, the ability to tap this fund source would come in very handy. So I think the sufficiently broad language contained in the bill is very appropriate to the situation that we're in.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Amanda, do you have any questions? None? Senator Peter, no, none? Senator Louise, do you have any questions? None? Senator Telo, do you have a question, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question. This is for Paula. I'm pretty sure there's some protocol SOPs when it comes to any excess revenue. When, when you found out, when was the day that you found out that there was excess revenue? And what is the protocol to report that excess revenue? In other words, you, yeah, you knew, you knew that there was excess revenue because you overprojected the COLA? And once you realized that, like you mentioned earlier, you didn't really know how many for sure was retired and, until a certain day? But when did you find out that you overprojected these revenues? And what was your, what did you do? Who, who did you tell about this?
Would be prior to paying out the COLA, we actually have to generate the list of individuals that are going to be receiving the COLA, and we transmit that for the general fund portion, as well as the autonomous agencies to DOA, so that they can bill appropriately. I mean, as far as, we only asked for what we needed. I wasn't aware that we had to report any excess, because we didn't take anything else other than what we needed.
So the, okay, so if I'm not mistaken, the legislature came up with a number that was to be given to pay out COLA in our budget bill?
Yeah, they made change.
That amount came from your projections on how much money you're going to need to pay out COLA, correct?
That's correct.
And that amount came in, so when you were writing out all the names for their checks to go out, was it you that realized that you had an excess revenue that you, you overprojected?
No, it's prior to even checks being actually paid, be being distributed or ACH.
And when did you know that? Do you remember what day, you know, the month and day you knew that?
Probably early October, second week of October.
Okay.
Yeah, because once we, we retire everybody as of 9/29, now we have a, a pretty tight number as far as who we're going to actually pay out.
Okay, so it's around the, the first week of October then, correct? Okay.
Thereabouts.
Thereabouts, about October 7th or something like that?
I'm sorry, ma'am. The only reason is it's, we generate a list of individuals that are going to be paid. And that is forwarded to DOA together with each of the autonomous agencies and a list of individuals that they need to collect for. And then a dollar amount, a summary of what we need to pay those people. And I believe that was sent, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was sent probably the first week?
Yeah, yes, that is correct.
The first week of October? And it was, then, then it was Dr., I mean, Dr., there was Mr. Byrne that realized about the excess revenue at that time? Did you realize then, Mr. Byrne, that there was excess revenue?
No, Senator, I didn't.
All these names to be printed out in checks, to be sent out for COLA, it was given to you the first week of October? And it was sent to you at that time? Is that when you realized there was excess revenue? Or not excess revenue, I'm saying over, over appropriation for the COLA?
No, actually, I would draw your attention to the CRER, which is October's CRER, which shows, there's a $2,000 difference, but it shows it on page seven, that there's a 468,000 funds available.
No, that's, I, I, maybe I'm, I'm not making, it's okay. Mr. Byrne, when Paula sent you the names of those people who, who are to receive COLA payments, which was, she mentioned the early part of October, at that time when you received it and you were cutting the checks out, because I assume that you, you cut the checks out to the recipients of COLA, and realized there were less recipients than anticipated, leaving that additional funding from COLA, did you realize that in the middle of October or the, the first week of October?
Senator, DOA doesn't cut the checks.
Oh, okay.
Retirement Fund cuts the checks.
Retirement cuts the checks?
We, DOA provides the funds to the Retirement Fund, and as stated before to the Speaker, we, we sent the Retirement Fund $17 million. It was then our job to collect the appropriate contribution for the retirees of the autonomous agencies, and we have just finished collecting those amounts.
Okay, so Paula, then you're the one that, retirement cuts the checks for COLA then?
That's correct. Checks are direct deposits.
Okay, and it was then that you realized there was an overappropriation because you realized that you over exceeded the amount that you anticipated? It was in October, correct? And at that time, is that when you tell DOA that you, you have less than you had anticipated and that there is excess revenue or additional funding? Or, no? That's not how it rolls?
No.
Okay.
No. The actual appropriation is made to DOA. So what we do is we will, we will tell DOA how much we need actually come October to pay out the COLA. Now, if there's a difference in, in the appropriation, I don't know, I didn't realize that it was something I have to report.
Yeah, so, okay, you know, Mr. Chair, we're going around in circles. My point here is that if there was any additional funding or any over in appropriation to something that we pay out, I think that the OFB, the legislature, should know about it right then and there, instead of we finding out later on when a bill comes out. I don't think that's proper, well, it's not, you know, proper accounting purposes. I think that the, the legislature is the one holding the purse strings here and should know exactly how much they have and what we can appropriate, not finding out later. So my point is, there's somewhere, there's something that's wrong here. And the point is, as soon as Revantax found out there was some, they overestimated. they overestimated on these COLA payments, then the legislature should have been notified right then and there of this funding that was available. So that was my whole point of this conversation because the bill was introduced on October 19th. So I'm just trying to figure out where did it miss here that we were not notified as a legislature? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Senator Clinton, do you have any questions? None. Senator Lee, do you have any questions? Senator Torres, author of the bill. Do you have any questions? And would you like to make a statement in reference to what Senator, Mr. Lester brought up about probably a technical error that needs to be stated? Before we close for any amendment and dismiss the panel?
Yes, actually, I had intended to proffer an amendment to make those, a motion to make those technical amendments. And essentially is in two places. One is in the title where it just says Section 5. It's indicating that's Section 5A. And then again in Section 2, where it discusses amending that, we just insert the A to Section 5A of Chapter 11. So, I mean, it was technical, it was an oversight pretty much in when we were drafting the bill, but the actual section that is being amended is, was correct. The actual amendment was correct. So it's just an oversight and a technical correction that we, and we submitted that, I believe, to Clerk's office already.
Okay, my colleagues, well, that being stated, questions are done. I'd like to thank the panel for your participation today. Mr. Lester, Lester, Ed, Llewellyn and Paula, thank you for participating today. And on the other side of Lester and Ed, I like your report today, the 41 million. Please keep us informed of where's that money going. I will be contacting your office. I'm very concerned about that. That's separate from this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's it, right there, go on. I'd ask the author of the bill to make the motion. We're now at the floor amendments. The panel has been dismissed.
Thank you.
Is there any amendments that's been submitted?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sent to the Clerk's office an amendment which reads, "To allow the legal counsel to make technical changes to the description of Section 2 to be consistent with the title of the bill and operative language of Section 2." So that is the motion.
Would any of my colleagues like to speak to that motion? Senator Reese, do you have a comment you'd like to make?
Can we just confirm if you have a Legal Bureau's version? Didn't, isn't the issue that in Section 2 it only says Section 5 and it doesn't say Section 5A? Isn't that the issue?
Right, that's the issue that Lester brought up is that they needed the aid to protect the other parts. And I think she was, what was your?
Don't we need to make that amendment also?
Yeah, so that was, that was it, that we will allow legal. And essentially, if I may elaborate, so on the bill, in the title, for example, the title will say, "An Act to Amend Section 5A in Chapter 11 of Public Law." And then again on page 2, on line 9 where it says Section 2, Clerk will also make a technical correction where Section 2 reads, "Section 5A in Chapter 11 of Public Law 3599 is hereby amended to read." So essentially, it's just two places.
No objection, thank you.
Thank you.
No objection. There being none, so I'd ask the author of the bill if you make a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole so we can wrap this up.
Mr. Chair, I move that we rise out of the Committee of the Whole.
With the motion that you made, attached?
With all the amendments attached to Bill 420-35 LS.
Are there any objections? There being none, we're on recess at this point.
I'm in a 35 minutes, let's let you in Guam. Is back from recess. Colleagues, at this time, I will recognize the OFB's Chair, Senator Joe Snogstein. You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body that Bill 420-35 LS action was, on the action of the Committee of the Whole, it was deliberated and with motions and without, with no objection. And I ask that it be placed on the third reading file.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. L. Shelton on Bill Number 197-35 LS.
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill Number 197-35 COR as substituted on the floor.
On that motion to accept, hearing or seeing, are there any objections? Hearing or seeing none, motion carries. Legislative Secretary, you're still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I move to place Bill 197-35 as substituted on the floor into the third reading file and to discuss it.
Please proceed, Secretary.
Sidois Masi. Bill 197-35 COR is a comprehensive bill updating the charter of the University of Guam to bring the institution into the 21st century. We've heard the pleas of the university in this legislature and legislatures passed for a greater investment in higher education. From 2015 to 2018, UOG lost $18.5 million. And the fact is that no matter how hard we've tried to catch up in these past budget cycles, and though we've been able to secure full allotments for the university for the last two years, we still come up a little bit short to meet all the needs of the University of Guam. And as the university has come before us to beg for increases in appropriations to improve the school's capability for providing a top-notch education here at home, to keep our local talent here at home, we have told them perhaps next year and encouraged them to do everything in their power to create revenue without putting it on the backs of students, without raising student tuition. UOG has seen an increase in student enrollment, and there still exists a need for increased revenue. Bill 197-35 is a modernization bill that provides the institution with greater financial independence while strengthening UOG's mission toward island's sustainability. It is essential to providing the University of Guam with the freedom to diversify its revenue sources by allowing the university to enter into public-private partnerships that could have the potential to create more funds to keep Guam's evolving institution of higher education flourishing financially. Bill 197 represents the most significant change to the University of Guam charter in decades and authorizes them to more seamlessly go into these public-private partnerships, create contracts, and authorize short-term borrowing by the University of Guam Board of Regents. This bill, for background, was ratified by the University of Guam Board of Regents and endorsed by the current president of the University of Guam, Dr. Thomas W. Christ, as well as past University of Guam president, Dr. Robert Underwood. And ultimately, Bill 197 will facilitate UOG's evolution toward better student services, better student facilities, and higher student success in the 21st century. I ask my colleagues for their support of this bill so that we can allow the University of Guam to do what we've asked them to do, to create revenue without putting it on the backs of students. And I welcome the discussion today to strengthen this bill and any questions that my colleagues may have. Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary Shelton. On the main motion, anybody wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Will Castro, you are recognized. Senator Perez, did you -- Senator Castro, I will recognize you, Senator. Senator Castro, I will recognize you this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if it was any other entity, I would express strong reluctance in providing such flexibility. But having come from the university, both as a student and at one time, an employee, and knowing full well the shared governance model that's inherent in that institution, at least for me, I'm somewhat comforted by that shared governance process. I have full faith and confidence in the leadership, but I've actually seen -- I've seen the shared governance model work at the university. They're very critical, they're very deliberate, they're very methodical, and especially if they're doing it right, it's tied to the process of continuous improvement through the self-study process or accreditation. And so, any other institution without that kind of a model, for me at least, as one member of 15 here, I would have strong reservations. But I remember sitting in this building at least three, four times now, listening to senior members of the administration from the university talk about awesome plans that they have to develop revenue sources for the institution, to bring back those who have left the island, and to do other things that they've envisioned, even in terms of technology. And I think this is -- this is a -- it's actually a very bold step forward, Madam Speaker. And I think this could be that one opportunity in such a comprehensive bill that's been proposed that may give them the tools necessary to effectuate those ideas. I had a discussion, a sidebar, with one of my colleagues here the other day, both of us having some experience at the university, and just going back and forth in terms of the fidelity of the shared governance model. And I basically provided her, although I won't be returning to the body on the 36th, I was sharing with my colleague that if it fails, if there's something that goes awry in the time that has passed since, assuming this passes and it's signed into law, there's nothing to stop the Guam Legislature from coming back and reversing its position. But I really think, I really believe that if we want them to thrive, we have to empower them with these types of enablements. I mean, I've seen them over the decades, Madam Speaker, do some really neat things, a really innovative approach to contracting, public contracting. And initially, I was averse to that. I thought it was a really interesting way to use a quasi-government entity to engage in business contracting with the government, basically taking other government services for itself. That's what it was doing. But if you look how many years later since that's happened through the universities, what is it, research center, whatever it is, they have this corporation that they do that type of contracting work. It's done a lot of good in many different ways. Off the top of my head, I didn't prepare remarks, but it's done so much. It's allowed for the scholars there to apply their knowledge and experience and expertise in ways that I couldn't fathom at the time through the research corporation until that came into effect. And at the time, I wasn't a senator, and I was suspect of the motives. But then, and then here comes, fast forward, I don't know how many years later, Bill 197, I had my suspicions up. I even discussed this in the sidebar with the respective Chair and the prime author, expressing my reluctance on multiple sections of the bill. But then I stepped away from myself, and I thought about the institution. I thought about Dr. Christ and Dr. Anita. I even remembered the faculty union. I'm not a big fan of unions, just for the record. But I thought about that shared governance model that I was a part of at the Northern Mountains College and at the University of Guam, and it works. And I'll tell you, even as far as the region nominating council is concerned, there are so many steps and so much scrutiny. And so, why do I lay all this out? Why do I set this, the context? It's because that living, breathing organization up there in Mangilau is alive and well. And there's no way, if you're -- if the efficacy, the fidelity of what you're trying to do, there's no way, in my opinion, that if there's any kind of shenanigan or room for improper use of public funds and assets, that it could escape, that you could escape that unveiling through the self-accreditation process. And everybody is watching everybody else up there. That's the shared governance model. So thank you for the privilege to speak, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Chair, for dealing with my concerns. Senator Shelton, Senator Tyto, thank you for allowing me to, not debate, but to go back and forth with you, colleague, in terms of, is this something that we believe is good for the institution? And I think for as long as we'll be around and able-bodied, that we can also be that watchdog from the outside looking in. But as far as I'm concerned, at this point in time, Madam Speaker, I'd like to register my support for Bill 197, and I reserve the balance of my time. Thank you.
Sidois Masi, Senator Castro, anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a question for the author of the bill.
Please state your question.
So in Section 16139, so it authorizes UOG or the board to enter into short-term borrowing agreements. If UOG fails to be able to meet any of its debt obligations, short-term or not, where would they request the funds to assist? Would it come from the general fund? And would the legislature be involved in the approval of the short-term borrowing?
Senator, Legislative Secretary, would you like to answer that?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And so, the section is Section 12, Section 16139, short-term borrowing, which I've clarified in this version of the substitute bill, that these obligations will be paid through University of Guam revenues. And the idea behind this bill is that the University of Guam, through their short-term borrowing and through the ability to enter into long-term contracts, will be able to diversify revenue streams with different projects and be able to meet all of these obligations on their own.
Thank you. Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So I guess the other question is, if UOG fails to meet any of the debt obligations, where would they get the money from to cover that?
Senator Shelton?
Again, Madam Speaker, it would be up to the University of Guam through these different projects they have planned for diversifying revenue. So it is their intention here to be able to make more money for the University of Guam without raising student tuition by going into projects such as the global dormitory on the property, go into creating a global dormitory on their property for more than 6,000 international students that they see annually, to be able to rent out a dorm facility for them and to create more revenue by offering more dorm space to our local and regional students. This is just one of the options on the table.
Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So shouldn't the legislature be involved in this process to approve the short-term borrowing?
Legislative Secretary, would you like to answer that?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So this section of the law will allow the University of Guam to go into these short-term borrowing agreements without legislature, without the legislature's direct involvement or direct approval. However, the legislature does confirm every member of the Board of Regents, which oversees the operations and the finances of the University of Guam, and will have the overall decision-making power for these short-term loans.
Senator Perez?
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. So another question for the author in regards to the long-term leasing. So that would be Section 13 of the bill, and part of GCA, it's Section 16140. Basically, this would exempt UOG from government lease limits of five years. Current law allows for leases to not exceed five-year limit, current law allows for leases that exceed five-year limit to require legislative approval. Again, the lack of involvement from the legislature places a lot of independence with the university to enter into whatever lease contracts it would like for whatever purposes. So I guess I would like to state for the record, I think this is, I guess, perhaps a potential issue. You know, I think these measures, in a way, is trying to create an autonomous agency. And, you know, the revenue stream is not, you know, it's not as, you know, great as we see from some of these autonomous agencies, such as GPA, the utilities, and GWA. And considering that there has been a decline in the funding, and I do appreciate the efforts and the creative thought that goes behind this, but again, I'm concerned about the potential impacts. Should the revenue stream, you know, fall short, and then we're stuck with potentially these, you know, having to pay the debt obligation? And also, I think that in regards to leasing of land, I think that is something that should stick with, stay with the legislature as far as, you know, extending any leases beyond five years until the law has changed. But I think that, you know, these resources are, have long-term impacts, and I think it's important to have more eyes on it to ensure that the investment is utilized properly and that, you know, it benefits, you know, there's overall community benefits to this. So I do raise my, you know, concern regarding these parts of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Minority Leader, you're recognized.
Sidois Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when Bill 197 first came out, it had so much involved in the bill, almost everything with the kitchen sink in here. It discussed about so many different topics. So we asked if it's, you know, the germane-ness to it, and we got an answer back saying that, according to legal, it was germane. I guess because they're talking about everything at the University of Guam. But I don't think there is a germane-ness when you're talking about students not receiving any benefits for retirement, and then totally switching and talking about borrowing capabilities for the University of Guam, and then switching and talking about the sustainability, and then also about SREP, which is the Secretary of the Pacific Environmental Program. It just goes everywhere in this bill. But the biggest apple, I guess, the biggest part of this bill is the borrowing capacity. And it was asked during the public hearing to the University of Guam, you know, have you ever had a difficult time getting any loans at all? And the answer was no. You know, I'm one that believes in growth, economic growth. In fact, I have a bill out that extends the borrowing from being able for an agency to borrow actually up to 10 years, from five years to 10 years. And, you know, I don't have a problem with that because I think it should be extended. It's very difficult to get any kind of investor to come and invest with only five years. But my issue is the 30-year lease. That's quite extensive without scrutiny, without allowing, you know, 15 of us to do our job and scrutinize the contract in hopes that it's the best choice they can make and that they have the funding to back it up. That's important. That's our job here at the legislature. Madam Speaker, that I think really if this bill left out the 30-year issue and created all by itself, you know, as a separate bill, then maybe that's something that I could support and allow us a little bit more time to go over this intent of what the University of Guam is trying to do. And I understand what they're trying to do, too. Basically, it's to have their own autonomy. Basically, it's to have their own autonomy. But the good Senator, previous Speaker, asked about, asked a question to the author of the bill, you know, what is going to pay this back? And she replied, "The revenues." Well, one of the biggest revenues that go into the University of Guam is general fund So the reality is, if they can't pay the loan, then it's got to come from somewhere. And if, you know, how many times, you know, students have come to us because they're going to raise the rates on their tuition? They come here to the legislature, and then everyone is up in arms, and what do we have to do? We have to bail at the University of Guam because the students don't want their tuition These are some of the issues that come up when we have to bail out certain agencies. And that's why scrutiny is so important. It gives us the opportunity to make sure that we really diligently do our job and look into what is in the best interest and how we're going to pay this back, especially during a financial crisis. Especially now, it's very difficult for us to do that. So my question is, one of the questions asked is that about these investors, you know, they don't want, they would rather not work with the government of Guam, and they would work better with the University of Guam if the government of Guam was not in the picture. Well, then, you know, that's, that really is not a good excuse at all. If they wanted to work with the University of Guam, they will work with the University of Guam. For them to say that if the government in Guam was involved, or the legislature was involved in approving any kind of public-private partnership for 30 years or a 10-year lease, the question would be to that investor, would you still work with the University of Guam? And you know they would. Of course they would. They've already got plans working on a building, they've got plans on a dorm building, they already have plans working with something, with the aquaculture. They've got people standing in the wings. So I don't see the hindrance of the University of Guam being able to get some investors to work with them, especially after coming to the legislature scrutinizing and knowing they got the backing of the government of Guam to back any kind of agreement up. Then those investors should feel a little bit more at ease. So Madam Speaker, I also like to thank the author of the bill to recognizing that the Secretary of the Pacific Regional Environmental is ministerial in nature. This is similar to the SPC. And this is on the level of the head of state to attend to these functions here. And I'm glad that, after conversations with the good author, that she spoke with the administration, and they too feel that, you know, with the concurrence of the executive branch to be designated as the official government representative. So having that concurrence in there maintains the ministerial head, like the Secretary of the Pacific, to represent Guam, because mostly it's policy in nature. And the last thing I'd like to bring up, Madam Speaker, is the section of the students. Now, during the public hearing, these students who are working for the University of Guam, they had one representative come to testify in favor of this bill that would, basically, they would not be getting any kind of benefits, like retirement benefits or medical benefits, working for the University of Guam. And this student said, "We would rather have more money than get those benefits." And University of Guam also was in favor of this. But I asked the student, I said, "Do you represent, how many people have you spoke to in the student body or the students that, who work at UOG?" And it was basically just a handful that he spoke to. And I said, "Well, about how many students are there working?" And I believe it was somewhere along the line, please correct me, the author of the bill, along the line of about 200 students, 200-plus students working at the University of Guam? Yeah, okay. And when you're only talking to five or six students to ask whether they want this or not, or take away their benefits, you know, I don't know about you, but some students are not smarter than most of us, they start putting away savings in their retirement while they're in college. And then taking, stripping that away from them, well, what happens if they work at the University of Guam, they're able to get some retirement in, and then later on leave the government, and then come back into the government, and they still have that, those years of service? Well, now they're going to lose it. And medical, sometimes students appreciate the medical coverage. I know they're young, but I know their parents like the fact that they're able to get medical coverage. But like I said, only a handful of students was able to give a consensus about this. And then it was asked, "Well, can you please reach out to the other students that are working there, over 200 other students, to find out how they feel about this?" And I looked at the committee report, I didn't see anything that was added into unless the good author has some additional information that a consensus was taken. So Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask the good author, was there, if there was a consensus taken from additional students regarding if they supported this?
Legislative Secretary, would you like to answer?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I have nothing formally for the retiring speaker from a collective group of students, a survey, or anything of that sort. But what I can offer today is information that I've gathered from the retirement fund as well as the University of Guam regarding these benefits. And so the University of Guam is obliged to pay to the defined contribution plan every pay period for these students. And they are categorized as student employees. However, this plan, the DC Plan in law specifically states that part-time employees shall not be contributing to the plan. And so for the most part, more than 90% of these students are part-time student employees and are somehow short-term or contractual, contract employees. And so the University of Guam is paying for them every month, and in some cases, getting money returned from the retirement fund for paying for these students because they're being told on one hand to pay, and then finding out that these students aren't actually eligible to give these benefits to. And so really, this bill is to, the parts of the bill that talk about the benefit of student employees, reclassifying this group of students, and specifically exempting the university from paying for retirement benefits, is for this special class of student employees who are, again, short-term, part-time, or contract employees to the University of Guam, who otherwise would not be getting benefits. And so that's why I, in this version of the bill, the substitute version of the bill, I was able to clarify the language to ensure that we put in that it was specifically for these part-time students.
Thank you, Secretary. Minority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, Madam Speaker, for that, and for that information as well, that was one of the amendments that was made, and greatly appreciated. But of the 200-plus students, I'd like to ask them, 300, 300-plus students? I'm sorry.
I apologize, Minority Leader. Just saying your time of three minutes.
Oh, I thought there was 300 now students. Okay, my bad. No, okay, so just real quick, they said that 200-plus students of that 90%, if I'm not mistaken, she said 90% of those students are part-time and are not, you know, privy to the retirement or medical? I just wanted to verify that.
Yes, that's correct. And so if a student is, perhaps is a full-time employee, there are some very, very rare happenings of this, such as someone who is already working at the school and then decides that they want to attend college and become a student as well. So there are those few employees at the university who are already full-time employees, who are receiving their full benefits, and then decide to also go to school. But for the most part, aside from that very small category, all of the students are part-time, again, short-term contracts, a very limited, limited scope of benefits to be given to these student employees.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary. Minority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, okay, that's good to know. However, there still are those students out there that may want to, you know, stay within the, not working part-time but working full-time, that still would like to contribute to the retirement fund, have themselves, be part of the retirement fund and medical. Without the consensus, it's very difficult, you know, to decide on this when we don't really hear from the students, and we only heard from one. But I appreciate the time that you gave me, Madam Speaker, and I reserve my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point of information.
State your point of information, Secretary.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So again, that is why it's clarified in the bill that these are only the part-time student employees. So if there is an employee who's already a full-time employee of the University of Guam who is also a student, none of their employment benefits would be affected by this bill. And I'd also like to mention that this bill had a very lengthy public hearing process. We introduced this bill last year. It's been open for public comment this entire time. I've, you know, talked to students, I've talked to the University of Guam. So there has been ample time for students to express their concerns about these benefits, if there were additional concerns. We did have the University of Guam Student Government Association president who offered this testimony at the public hearing, and we did not hear from any other students beyond that. So I'd just like to offer that for our colleagues' consideration.
Thank you for the point of information. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else? Senator Torres, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I think it's important to go back to the legislative findings and intent, to get a bigger picture of what this bill seeks to accomplish. Essentially, the legislative findings and intents indicates that the University of Guam has not been able to increase its revenue despite increases in student enrollment. Accordingly, it is the intent of the legislature to provide the university with the freedom and independence to diversify its revenue sources, which requires the flexibility to enter into partnerships that will provide revenue and allow the university to compete in the changing market for institutions of higher education brought on by the digital culture. I rise in support of the University of Guam. We are, this pandemic has shown us worldwide, but most especially on Guam, the need to diversify our economy, the need to go beyond what the norm is. The sustainability of Guam's economy has been widely discussed by this body. And the reason that I would vote in favor of such a progressive bill like this is that it is indeed progressive, and it is progress that we need at this very point. And what more to empower an institution like the University of Guam, as most academic institutions are the drivers, they are the ones that forge ahead, that come up with new ideas, new technologies, they are the research banks, information banks for the community. The University of Guam, we've seen, has grown in its portfolio, in its reputation, in the number of people that, students that graduate, students of competence who go not only work on Guam and are professionals, but are highly sought by other jurisdictions and states. This is our University of Guam. And if Guam is to look for a brighter future, we need to invest and give a lot of freedoms and opportunities for the university to grow and to expand its revenue base. The day of the old is gone. It's, we're in a digital age, we are now maximizing our geographic location, we are trying to lure investors to Guam. But investors cannot come if the package is not, doesn't have enough incentive for them. And I just want to end with this. While we want to have a lot of oversight and the final word, I am reminded of the Board of Regents of the University of Guam. I look to that Board of Regents as a body of some of the most qualified and competent and accomplished members of this community. And I would be willing to entrust their good judgment on what is good for the university and its ability to thrive and grow and provide for its students. I have a lot of confidence that, you know, they are indeed up for, given the, for being given the latitude and the freedoms that this bill affords. And also, if you, if you just look to what we keep doing in this legislature as well, we have had a lot of discussion about qualifying certificates, about incentivizing investors. The concept is no different here. Giving the university enough latitude to look at proposals, to look at options, to see how they can grow and develop their revenue base more independent of what the government is able to provide for them, which we know is not sufficient. So I rise in support. I think that there is a lot in here that maybe is hard to digest, but if you think about the basic tenets of this legislation, what it is intending to do, the intention is noble, and I think that what is highlighted here in terms of Center for Island Sustainability, the Sea Grant Special Fund, and giving them parameters for short-term borrowing and long-term leasing, those are all reasonable provisions when you're looking at investing in the magnitude that the university will need to do and undergo if they are to grow into another level of competency and offerings to the island and to their student body. So I just want to express that, Madam Speaker, and Sujus Massey to the authors.
Buen pobeto, Senator Torres. On the main motion, if not Senator, Senator Therese, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin, I'm just trying to find, and I can't find it, that one of the previous speakers said that the legal counsel deemed this bill to, all these provisions, to be germane. And I would just like to raise a point of order that could be clarified, because there is such a diverse range of things that is trying to be done in this one bill, you know, under the statement that, oh, we're just updating the charter, but actually, they're doing so many things in one bill, and I keep trying to get my head around it. They're authorizing UOG to enter into borrowing agreements without legislative approval, amending personnel rules, classifying of students, establishing the Center of Island Sustainability as a UN entity, repealing the Guam National Energy Institute, establishing the UOG Sea Grant Special Fund, establishing representation at the Pacific Regional Environmental Program, promulgating procurement regulations, authorizing short-term borrowing, and authorizing long-term leasing and contracting.
Senator Therese, if you give me a moment, I'm working with clerk right now to give you the date. This bill was heard earlier last year, if I'm not mistaken, or earlier. It was sent down to the voting file, then pulled back up. So in reference to the question that was asked, I'm asking the clerk to verify that because if I'm not mistaken, that same question was asked. So let me get a moment's recess.
Thank you.
Ymiran 35 minutes later, Toodan Gualhan is back from recess. Senator Therese Schlaue, you still have the floor.
I guess I'm just checking, we were on hold for the clerk to check whether that was discussed at the last session, when this bill was up on the floor. Is that, I take it as a no, it was not?
Senator, there was a, when we were in recess, I was informed that there were, there was a request that was made, and if you needed to follow through, then you're more than welcome to make that request, so.
I thought we were in recess.
Right.
Okay.
And the information has been provided back to me, Senator, so you still have the floor.
All right, can we take a one-minute recess then, Madam Speaker?
We are on a moment's recess. Nina Chantais-Finconelos Latudan Guam is back from recess. Senator Theresa, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, I just want to put on the record, it was clarified by the clerk that this issue had not been raised when the bill was on the session floor the last time, and then referred back to the committee. So, and then, you know, I've received a message from council that's saying that the, she believes these are germane. The reason I raised the issue is because they, you know, were tying them together as they changed to the charter of the University of Guam, but, but very hard to discuss borrowing limits of 30 years, or with, you know, things such as who's going to be our representative to the United Nations versus who's going to, yeah, be covered under retirement and not? What type of procurement exceptions should we make for the University of Guam? Those types of things. I really, you know, have stated it several times, that, yeah, I just wish these were separated so that they could all get their due diligence and due, you know, exposure, and that the public could really understand that that is what we're trying to do by this bill. When the bill had the public hearing, the title was not amended yet at that time to talk about all the different things that were going to be done in the bill. The title, as announced to the public before the public hearing, simply said it was going to update the charter of the university to facilitate its growth into a 21st century institution, meeting the educational needs of the region while giving it more financial independence. So, of course, there's some parts of this bill that I have no objection to, very simple, and, but there are others that I think really do deserve more consideration by this body and the people of Guam. The university wants to remove certain students from its clasping, from its retirement benefits, and supposedly there have not been, there has been no objection to that. They said that they would save money by removing these students from retirement benefits, and instead use that money that they normally used on retirement benefits to hire more students. And so I'm not going to object to that provision. The second provision is about changing, right now, the university has a special way that it treats academic personnel. They differentiate between academic and staff, and all staff is treated under one set of rules, and academic are treated differently. So this, you know, so one of the provisions of this bill would take professional, technical, federal, and externally funded, sounds like grant professionals or other professionals, and put them to be treated like faculty. And I, I don't know all the implications that that would bring for the university, but it did seem clear from the public hearing that that does not reduce the costs for the university. It, in fact, might increase the costs. And so what my question was regarding this entire bill was, what part of this helps them to reduce tuition? Because at the time, we were facing an increase in tuition, and we were finding that the university had increased salaries at the same time, and, you know, then we had the students, of course, up in an outrage over the increase in tuitions. And none of us wants to see that, but I just wasn't convinced at the public hearing that this is a promise to keep the tuition down, or to revert those increases that are, that continue to be planned. Or, you know, the very little influence that the legislature has currently under the University of Guam is the budget. And we asked them, you know, what impact this budget might have on tuition. But when we, but the more, the more transparency, I guess, we give up from looking at what the university is doing. We already have, you know, barred ourselves from academic matters because of their accreditation. And we've done so many things. We've transferred land in the past 20 years to the University of Guam to allow them to continue to expand. We've transferred special funds that were supposed to be made for roads over to the University of Guam so that they could use it to expand. We've passed special bills for the university to allow them to set up the, the research corporation, University of Guam, I think that's the name of it, RCUOG, that allowed that, these various, that was created so that they could bypass the procurement law, bypass personnel laws of the government of Guam, and, you know, bring in income from private institutions, public-private partnerships, that's what they talked about a lot at the time, and that they could use that money directly without all of the restrictions. And so I remember the debate on that, and the legislature had allowed that, and it, it was for the same purpose as what's stated here, you know, to, to allow them to bring in more revenue and to bypass a lot of the rules. So I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned about bypassing even more rules, or allowing them permanently and throughout the university now, not in just sort of special pockets, but throughout the university, to, to govern themselves under different rules. The, of course, the provision in here, allowing them to pay in advance for, for off-island purchases, I have no objection to that, that's what the, the legal has corrected it now, the amended, the substituted version's now corrected. So now I have no objection to that provision, it's just going to allow, I think, for the advanced purchase, especially of textbooks off-island, or advanced payment, yeah. But of course, I think everybody knows, the biggest parts of this bill that I, and, you know, whether we have one entity designated to, you know, represent us at the university, I mean, the United Nations, I think that too should require its own special legislation so that the public can discuss that, so that we can see. Otherwise, you know, the legislature just passed a bill not too long ago determining who from the legislature was going to represent Guam and a certain United Nations entities. I think the governor has done the same, but anyways, bypassing those, I just, I want to focus on what I think is hidden in this bill, you know, the biggest part of it is this allowing the University of Guam to enter into leases up to 30 years, which bypasses the current law that, that allows leases in excess of five years, but requires legislative review of those leases. So I think it's a misstatement for people to say that anything that we have in our law right now is prohibiting the University of Guam from entering into long-term leases. The only thing it's preventing them from doing is entering into those leases without review of the legislature. And that was done after many years of huge authority in many government agencies, and then we find later abuses, abuses so large that we could hardly recover from those. Huge financial impacts to the government of Guam. And I'd just like to remind everybody that this university is founded on donated donations from the people of Guam, land, everything. And I, and while we are trying our best to ensure that we can open this institution up to every single student graduating from high school on Guam, allow them all to get an education for as, you know, inexpensive as possible, hopefully free as soon as we can get there, that's what I would like to see us moving towards. And I just see no harm in allowing the legislature to review public-private agreements with any agency. And I'm, I'm very concerned that, that there's a, you know, talk as if this is absolutely necessary, that it would preclude any other arrangements, or that, and, and I'm concerned about it for university, but not even, even blindly, I'm concerned about it, because it, it has the potential to open the door for every other agency. And if, you know, we're just, I feel like we're just, we're going backwards instead of forward. And I'm all for the university, I'm, I'm, look at us, we're here debating a bill, and I don't know what the deal is that they have planned for the 30 years right now. I don't think the public knows, and we're going to be passing this bill, and we don't even know. And, and that's, I guess, the gist of what I'm concerned about, is if it was such a good deal, we would so be gladly jumping on it. We would want to show that to the world, and, and as I think a previous speaker said, and show our endorsement of it, back it up with government pledges if it's that great, things like that. And that's what, that's what we do when we review these leases. And I just think that's fair, you know, with resources, that all autonomous agencies are, you know, we face the same thing with the autonomous agencies. The people of Guam granted them land, cash, all other resources, they've taken them, and when they make a profit, you know, we see raises, we see all kinds of things, but we're not seeing the benefits necessarily going back to the people of Guam. And that's the only reason why I think there's no harm in additional review. They continue to make long-term deals that they want to make, if, and the better, you know, all they need to do is present those and show how it benefits, and how we're not going to get a bad deal. And I, I don't know, man, if I'm just old, or, but I feel like our, you know, we can't have forgotten all the bad deals that we've entered into, or that we were potentially liable for, including the YTK that the legislature had to get involved in, including, you know, these other, other ones. And so this evolved, this kind of scrutiny has evolved. And this has got nothing to do with who the individuals are up there right now, because that too will evolve. And we, as a body, will evolve, but I just feel like the more eyes on something, the better. And the more opportunity for the people of Guam to weigh in on it, the better. And we've only seen that to be better. I've never seen it to be detrimental, to have additional scrutiny, to have additional eyes, to have additional input from the people. In fact, I think they would love to come down here and tell us how great the deals are that, you know, the university's going to get, especially if those are going to benefit them, or if those are going to allow us free tuition, you know, for more of the students, things like that. I, so, anyways, I do have an amendment, Madam Speaker, I think it's been uploaded to the clerks. Give me time to just find a section.
Please proceed. Does everybody have it on their drive?
Oh. Are they, do you have that? Okay, so, um... Yes.
Which, you have several, which is the first, Senator? Page one, line 10, are you going to start with that one, Senator?
Uh, sorry, section 12.
No worries.
Yeah, I was dealing with an old version, so I think on the new version.
Page 10, line 14.
Is that the first one? Sure. Line six? No, page six, page six, line 18. Yeah, these are pretty much just deleting sections of the bill.
Okay.
So this one would...
Does everybody have it? SB 197, FATMT, L8, P6.
Page six, line 18, it would be removed, section six, um, this is the section of the bill that, that requires that, or that, that allows the university to enter into borrowing without legislative approval.
On that, on that amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Legislative Secretary, Senator Joe, and then Sabina. Legislative Secretary?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in objection to this amendment. This is an amendment that will essentially take out one of the major parts of the bill to allow the University of Guam to go into short-term borrowing agreements under 10 years. And so these agreements, these loans are extremely important to the University of Guam, and what we're trying to accomplish with this update to the charter, there are several projects. I know that all of us here in this room are very aware of the UOG master plan that, especially the physical master plan, which will be updating buildings at the University of Guam that are older than, certainly older than me, but older than many of us in the room, that, that are dilapidated, that are, that really, really are in need of being fixed. So, for example, USDA, as a lender to the University of Guam, has shared their concerns that they'd like to see, that they'd like to be able to deal with the university without the legislative approval by going to the Board of Regents and approving the terms of the loan, so that the University of Guam will be able to build buildings such as priority areas like the Student Success Center, and the Triton Engagement Center, and the Fine Arts Complex. And these are concerns that the USDA, who is, you know, the lowest interest loner to the, to the University of Guam, has expressed to the administration, to the University of Guam administration. And to ease some of the concerns of our colleagues, when it comes to taking on any new debt, the, the institution has to prove that they can, in fact, pay that debt in the first place to be granted this loan. And so the University of Guam will have to do everything in its power with the Board of Regents, with the administration, to show that they are able to take on any new debt without burdening, burdening the government of Guam. And I know there's lots of talk about what will happen if the University of Guam will default on, on any loan, but they will have to show that they, they are in fact very capable of taking this loan on in the first place before ever being awarded the loan. So I do object to this amendment, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary. Senator Jocelyn Augustine, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I'm just, maybe the author can, of the amendment can explain that.
Please state your question.
Well, I, I want to explain
Okay.
how I got to the question. Everything that was said earlier was that we should all know what, what they're going to get into, get involved into. The amendment is to strike out no agreements to borrow money which shall be repaid without prior... all prior, bottom line, with all prior legislative approval. So in other words, you got to get our endorsement first. Am I correct? I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm reading it wrong. Maybe I, I'm older than the author, but I, you know, I'm just going to say that, is that, I'm just trying to understand, no agreement to borrow money shall be entered by the University of Guam without prior legislative approval. So my understanding is that we have to agree to anything they want to borrow first, right? Before they can borrow.
I'll yield to that, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, Senator Therese?
Yes, thank you for the question. So the current law says that they are required to get legislative approval. This amendment being proposed in the bill would exempt them from getting legislative approval. So I want to strike out the whole section so that it, so that we will in fact be governed by current law and not, not change the current law that requires legislative approval.
Senator Joe, does that help?
Okay, Madam Speaker, I'm just concerned is that the University of Guam, I don't know if many of you remember in the past, they've always had problems when GovGuam would get involved in the University of Guam, their accreditation and all that stuff. And I'm concerned, and I'm just as concerned as a couple of my colleagues said, that if they default, who are they going to turn to? Us. That's what it's going to come down to. And I'm just concerned is that, I would hope, but maybe I'll be hoping too much. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinocci. Senator Perez?
So, yeah, so if the, the sponsor of the amendment can reiterate the point of information that she, she provided earlier regarding how the strikeout actually reverts the legislative approval would be required.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Therese, would you like to yield?
Sure, thank you. So according to current section 16118(c) of Title 17, Guam Code annotated, "No agreements to borrow money shall be entered into by the university without prior legislative approval." The bill proposes to add an exemption from this current statute that's for, for borrowing less than 10 years. So my amendment is to strike this section in the bill, and by striking this section in the bill, that means we're making no change to the current law, and the current law would remain in place, the current law that requires legislative approval for borrowing.
Senator Perez, does that help?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And I rise in support of this amendment. You know, we're dealing with a pandemic, and we have to make sure that we're fiscally responsible. And we know that these short-term borrowings are probably one of the highest interest rates. And I think it's really important that we, you know, we ensure that we are controlling, you know, the budget, because, you know, it's going to come back to us. You know, we're going to have to, if, if for some reason that, you know, university and, you know, cannot make its debt obligations, they're obviously going to, going to come back to the legislature. And so which agency are we, are we going to cut then? So I think it's really critical that we, that this body really deliberates and thinks about the implications of, of exempting the, the short-term borrowing. Stu Smasey.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Will Castro, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I rise in objection to the amendment. I like to see that provision remain as part of the original language. Again, I want to remind and encourage my colleagues to look towards, as one or more of my colleagues had mentioned, they had inferred, they had made specific reference to the governing board of regents. Like ourselves, those members of the governing board have a fiduciary responsibility. And perhaps it's not common knowledge, but when you present a matter before the governing board, it's, it's quite a burdensome process. I mean, it can be as burdensome as the process we go through here in the Guam Legislature. Keep in mind that, again, as I referenced in my earlier testimony in favor of the bill as written, that you have three or four stakeholder groups. You have staff, I don't know, there are the staff council, you have the faculty union, you have the student government. You even have to get through almost often the finance committee of the board, so it's a subcommittee. But, but even beyond just the shared governance framework at the institution that is designed to protect the public's best interest, even beyond that, I think, I think the literature is rife if you read it. It's not, it's not the borrowing that's the issue in my mind, it's what the borrowing is for. And at this point in time, I, I'm not clear on that, but again, I have full faith and confidence in the institution's ability to articulate that path forward, whether it's a good-to-great program or whether it's any of those things that we have listened to for the last four years of my two terms. Give you a couple of examples I pulled out of 2018, 2019, 2017, and the budget process. One of my colleagues referenced the UOG Research Corporation, that's one. Then I read again, as recent as 2020, the International Dormitory, that's another. But things that are a little closer to me in terms of looking at our, as we reference in a, in another piece, the indigeneity of our people, this Myla Tati Program. I'm sure many of us might have missed, missed that, but I found it to be extremely innovative. This Myla Tati Program, as an example, Madam Speaker, is designed to bring people back. And when you bring people back, they reinvest into the institution of higher education known as the University of Guam. In addition to that, there was also talk about veteran services. Now, I'm not exactly sure how they're going to manifest that, but my point would be, if you give them enough flexibility to take out, whether it's a line of credit or a short-term borrowing note payable, and they make the investment in the CIP, that Capital Improvement Project, or they hire more people, or they do whatever they need to do when they debate it within that structure, I really believe that the return on investment is going to be there, because there's a lot of smart people up there, people who are charged, who are charged just like we are with that fiduciary responsibility. So again, at the very least, I want to encourage my colleagues to look at that flexibility. I don't think it's a partisan position per se, but I, I'm, I'm a big believer in the decentralization of decision-making. We will always, always retain that power as a third and equal branch of government. Nobody has that single authority, that power in the world to change that. So the 36th, the 37th, 38th, 39th, 40th Guam Legislatures can always reel them in and say, you really went off the tracks on this one, and we're going to revoke that privilege, the people's privilege. Until then, I say deliver full faith and confidence in the entity and allow them to see how far they can get with that line of credit, if that's, if that's what they desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Minority Leader, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, if, if this amendment was for all autonomous or semi-autonomous agencies, because that's what's happening right now, if this, if this bill should pass, then you're going to get every single autonomous agency, semi-autonomous agency, coming in front of this legislature and saying, you gave it to the University of Guam, now we'd like it too. We're setting precedents here. We're only allowing one agency to be able to do this? If this amendment would say all autonomous agencies can, can borrow without legislative approval for 10 years, and I'd, I'd be in support of it, but it wouldn't be germane. So Madam Speaker, we have to think about this, you know, more eyes, more ears, looking at this, the borrowing of funds that eventually, you know, who's going to pay for it? It'll most likely be the government of Guam or the general fund. We don't even know the plans. And that's another thing. It's, it's like if, if this amendment passes, then that means we're not going to see growth at the University of Guam, all those investors coming in and into the University of Guam, or the, or Dr. Christ won't be able to go out and get a loan. That's not true. That is not true. If this amendment passes, they can still get that loan up to 10 years. They just need to come to the legislature to ask for it, for us to see their plan. So like I said, Madam Speaker, we allow the University of Guam to go ahead and get a loan for 10 years without legislative approval, they're going to be knocking on our doors, all the other autonomous agencies, asking for the same thing. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Anybody else on the amendment? If not, Senator Therese, you may close.
Thank you. And of course, you know, no one wants to impede the University of Guam, but I just think we do owe it to, to everybody, you know, to look at the big picture here and how this is going to impact not just the University of Guam, but all other agencies and the government of Guam in general. I think it's fair for the people of Guam to have an opportunity to review what is being pledged for this borrowing. We don't know that right now. I've heard talk of the USDA. I asked some of the people from the University of Guam to show me the deal with the USDA. Show me in writing what they're saying is the impediment to their deal with the University of Guam, or who else is one, who else is lined up for these, this deal. I just feel like we should know that before we vote on this bill, but I haven't been able to access those documents. I want to know if pledging to borrowing is going to result in a tuition increase. I think it's fair to know that before it's done. And I'm not saying we're not going to allow it, but I think we're going to try to find any other way to do that. I would like to know if it's going to impact the general fund revenue that we are taking from other government agencies and giving to the University of Guam, if they're going to be using that to pay interest. I think that's fair for the people of Guam to know. Like I said, if USDA has concerns, I would like to know what those specific concerns are and not just, you know, it's preferred, everyone will tell that to us, that they prefer not to go through the legislature. I mean, I don't think, you know, without anything else, that that's how we should be determining our policy. And finally, I just want to say this does not impact accreditation, they have been able to get accreditation. It does not impact their, you know, or talk badly about any of the people up there at the University of Guam. It's just meant to be consistent with our overall policies, policy of transparency and letting everyone know what's going on before we obligate the government of Guam forever, before we obligate every budget from then on that we're going to have to meet this certain revenue because, you know, we're, we're in borrowing, things like that. I just think those are fair to know. I would, I would have no objection to considering a bill right now regarding whatever it is the USDA is trying to fund up there, I don't even know. I mean, that, that one particular thing, but we're trying, but the bill's trying to make a change to the charter forever. And so that's why I'm saying, it's so easy, we, we could easily consider anything that's a rush. We've, we've so often considered rush legislation, waived all the rules to bring in something that needed to be done quickly. And I, I can't see that being an impediment to, to get rid of, you know, all transparency or all types of input on this, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
On the amendment by, proffered by Senator Therese Terlai, there has been an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Are you in favor of your bill? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. We're going to have to take a couple of minutes recess, per the clerk, they need to reset. We're going to be in a moment's recess.